Good evening. Welcome to this Zoom webinar forum with the candidates for the Port Orchard City Council. Tonight's forum is sponsored by the League of Women Voters of Kitsap, which is recording this event for later access. BKAT, Bremerton Kitsap Access Television is also recording tonight. My name is Elizabeth Seaborn and I will be moderator for this forum. The League of Women Voters, which celebrated its 100th anniversary last year, is proud to be a nonpartisan organization, neither supporting nor opposing candidates and political parties. We'd like to invite any of you age 16 or older, all genders, to join our organization and help support our mission of empowering voters and defending democracy. The public was invited to send questions through the League's website. We've consolidated those, plus others, into the questions I'll ask of tonight's candidates. The questions will cover a range of topics and issues pertinent to Port Orchard. Candidates for position two are Jay Rosa Pepe and Randy Jones. Candidates for position three are Heidi Fenton and Scott Deener. Candidates for position six are Kalen O'Connor and Fred Chang. Candidates for council at large are Mark Trenary and Sean Williams. Due to a family emergency, candidate Kalen O'Connor was unable to attend tonight's forum. Thanks to all candidates for stepping up to offer your skills and talents in service to the community. We ask that during this forum, you maintain civility with one another. Because Kalen could not make it tonight, she sent a letter for me to read. "Thank you for inviting me to participate in the League of Women Voters Candidate Forum. I regret my inability to participate in this event tonight due to a family emergency. I'd like to take a moment to tell you about myself and why I am running for Port Orchard City Council. I have been a Washington resident my entire life, relocating from Gig Harbor to Port Orchard in 2015 after I started my career at Puget Sound Naval Shipyard. Leadership is something that comes naturally to me, and with the help of the partnership between Olympic College and PSNS, I am one quarter away from completing my third degree, two of those focused on the study of leadership. This is important to me in my run for city council because our current council members are lacking in critical leadership skills. Leadership is not a given position. It is not a title you are given because people have voted for you, but instead it is an earned role, a role and title that you step into through action. To be a leader in this great community of ours, we have to focus on the growth of our small businesses and listen to the residents that live here. If elected to city council, I will work every day to earn the title of leader. I will take action against the issues plaguing our city. Some issues I want to address are decreasing homelessness density, increasing transparency, and accessibility of city council, correcting infrastructure issues before new development, not after, supporting our small businesses, and making sure development projects are done responsibly and for the right reasons. I'm happy to answer any questions from voters via email, phone, or my Instagram page. Thank you." Moving on, candidates. During tonight's format, each of you will be given one and a half minutes to make an opening statement. We will go in the order your names appear on the ballot. Then, I will begin the questions. Each of you, in a rotating order, will have 60 seconds to respond. If you have answered a question and have time remaining, you may speak about a previous question or clarify a statement. At the end of the forum, each candidate will have one and a half minutes to make a closing statement. If you run out of time, you may finish your sentence. Our timekeeper will maintain the countdown electronic clock. So, to begin with, our opening statements, one and a half minutes, we will begin with Mr. Rosa Pepe.
Thank you. Thank you to the League of Women Voters Kitsap for hosting this forum. Its benefit to the public and other League of Women Voters initiatives cannot be overstated. My leadership work and volunteering history from the United States Navy to South Kitsap School District, as well as my volunteer community work is well documented in the Kitsap County Voters Guide. I'm proud of my service to my country and community. Tonight, we're going to get a lot of answers from candidates, including myself, about what is going well with the city of Port Orchard and what improvements need to be made. I ask you to focus on the facts and specifics of what is said, as opposed to opinions or unsubstantiated hype. For example, the current city council has never voted to impose eminent domain and has not approved tearing down houses unless the houses have been condemned and vacated. What the city council has done is approve changes to our city code to manage growth, improve city infrastructure, such as water, sewer, and roads, and work with citizens and businesses during the COVID-19 pandemic. Senator Patrick Moynihan once said, "We are all entitled to our own opinions, but there is only one set of facts." Focus on the facts tonight. Words previously used like corruption and no transparency have no weight without facts. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rosa Pepe. Next will be Mr. Jones.
Yes, thank you for hosting me. I appreciate this opportunity. This bike path and the thought of tearing our homes has gone on for over 10 years, so finally I stepped up. There are other homes and now the possible government campus taking homes. Now, although they have never imposed eminent domain, they have put it on me and my neighbors' shoulders since 2010. At no point have they ever deviated from the plan, and to this date, myself and my neighbors are slated for destruction. And property taken from Whiskey Gulch is still on their drafted plans. If that's not the case, please speak up, show it, show where my house is not to be destroyed. Because I'm not selling, and I have two neighbors who do not intend to have their homes torn down, and they're facing legal expenses that they can't afford, yet the city can pull money out of their pockets and get grants to destroy our homes and fight a legal battle. So if that's not the case, speak up and we will go away. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Next up will be Ms. Fenton.
Yes, thank you for this opportunity. I appreciate it. Yes, and I'm Heidi Fenton. I have lived in Port Orchard for 24 years. I have done in-home daycare for 32 years, and when summer came around, I retired from daycare. And all that time, I have never called in sick. My family always knew I was reliable, dependable, trustworthy, and truthful, and they appreciated me so much. And as I go forward for the community of the people, I will do exactly that, be reliable, dependable, and trustworthy and truthful to the people of my community. I came in to run for city council because I want to speak up for the voice of the people. I do feel that the small businesses and the community, the constituents, sometimes don't get acknowledged for what they're saying. And I totally believe in a voice of the people. And I will be an advocate for small businesses because they need the city council and they need to move forward and succeed and have lots of revenues down there. So I totally believe in what they need. And I also want for transparency to be more easily accessible, so we can find things super easy and not where it's really hard in an agenda or a packet. And so I'm here for the people. I'm here for the right reasons. Thank you.
Next up will be Mr. Deener.
Thanks to the League of Women Voters of Kitsap for hosting this event. It appears that there's a lot of work that goes into the mission of educating voters, and I look forward to this interesting evening. Before I start, a little bit about me. I'm the incumbent for position number three. I started living in Port Orchard in 2005 with my then-pregnant wife Susan and now have two kids at South Kitsap High School. I love Port Orchard for many things, but mostly for its character, its charm, its location in our region. And my family and I often frequent our local establishments and businesses, our downtown, and our pathways and parks. I have a degree in planning, public policy, and management. I've been working in the field of long-range planning and current planning for communities for nearly 30 years. I've been on both sides of the aisle, presenting to elected officials, and now as a council member, listening to staff recommendations. I know what is expected, and I know the rules and understand the rules very well by which we must operate. I'm not running on any single issue, or even just a few issues. My priorities are fiscal responsibility, managing growth, planning traffic projects and infrastructure, making new downtown development in the South Kitsap Community Event Center work together, and planning for parks and recreation. Though there's always room for improvement, this can all be done in public meetings that will continue to make most people happy with our governance. And after over 1,600 doorbells rung during my campaign so far and talking to many, many people, I feel I'm nearly spot on with the issues that we're facing in Port Orchard. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Deener. Next up will be Mr. Chang.
Good evening. I have lived in Port Orchard since 1996, and I have loved living where I do in the downtown area. I'm in walking distance of Bay Street, which may not be all the businesses in the sea, but I think have certainly the heart of the city with the library and many great restaurants. I served as a planning commission member before being elected to the council in 2005, and I've also organized a neighborhood block watch and chaired the Bremerton Ferry Advisory Committee because Port Orchard did not have one. As a council member, I've participated in and chaired various committees such as Economic Development and Tourism, Land Use, Lodging Tax, Public Safety and Utilities. I've also served as a representative to the Puget Sound Regional Council. I want Port Orchard to remain a great place to live, work, and play. And as Port Orchard becomes an increasingly popular place to live, I believe the city needs to make sure that development fees are fair and adequate to cover the impacts to our schools, parks, roads, and utilities. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chang. Next up will be Mr. Trenary.
You're muted. Mark, we can't hear you.
Mark, you need to unmute yourself.
All right, start over.
There you are.
Sorry about that. My name's Mark Trenary. I'm a resident and taxpayer for the city of Port Orchard for the last 34 years. I raised a family, two daughters, and my wife have lived here for that amount of time. I'm a longtime business owner. We survived the recession of 2008 through 2011 as a business owner and currently dealing with COVID-19 situation. I believe I know how to navigate the bumpy waters of running a business regardless of the size. I'm currently a five-year member of the City Planning Commission, so I know how the government business seems to operate, or at least I have a pretty good understanding. I'm a longtime Rotarian, past president of the South Kitsap Rotary Club with a history of community service. And I believe these experiences helped make me the best person for this position. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Trenary. And next will be Mr. Williams.
Good evening and thank you to the League of Women Voters for hosting this forum. My name is Sean Williams, and while I have not been a resident of Port Orchard nearly as long as the rest of the candidate slate, I have grown to love the community. I spent 20 years in the United States Navy, serving this nation, and decided it was time to serve the community. And that is the point. The job of the city council was to serve the community, not special interests. Look who supports the incumbents and tell me it's not special interest. I'm running primarily because I am a supporter of fiscal responsibility and responsible development. Why are we going into debt to build vanity projects while our roads crumble around us? Are sewers not capable of handling development? Taking water from Bremerton because we don't have the reservoirs or the water capability to absorb neighborhoods? Look at McCormick Woods. We had to have them make a reservoir just to supply water to residents. Responsible development means that our infrastructure is in place first. Schools, roads, water, power, sewage, everything, and then we build the residents. Responsibility, accountability, transparency.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. And that concludes our opening statements. I'll now proceed with question number one. You'll each have 60 seconds to respond. If elected to the city council, what would be your top priorities and why? We'll begin with Mr. Jones.
Yeah, first of all, no more grandiose projects. Let's deal with the problems we have at hand. If we are committed to a project like the community center, then let's do it responsibly, no cost overruns, and let's trim the fat on this. As long as we have water issues and infrastructure issues, we shouldn't be overextending ourselves on community centers, working on a government campus program, and above all, no more lobbyists and paid consultants. The funding for the paid consultants that the city of Port Orchard has paid while I've been watching the meetings is phenomenal. And let's work on consultants for infrastructure, not for what would tourism bring in for if we had a bike path or a community center. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Next will be Ms. Fenton.
Yes, thank you. I believe infrastructure is a big deal, and we need to be able to handle what we have right now and not go above and beyond. So that's a huge thing, because I think sometimes we're looking too far ahead and we're not working on the stuff that matters. And also, I believe the downtown could be a little bit more renovated. Let's put some thought down there for the small businesses. I hear stuff from them, and they feel like they're being ignored. And the downtown has looked the same for many, many years. I think there can be some improvement down there and bring a little bit more thoughtfulness down there and not ignore it. And definitely listen and open up to what the people want to say about this community. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fenton. Now we'll hear from Mr. Deener.
Thank you. I have a few priorities. The first is transportation and traffic improvements. We have lots of growth targeting Kitsap, sorry, targeting Port Orchard. It's the most affordable area in all of Kitsap Peninsula, except for parts of Bremerton, I suppose. But that means a lot of people are coming here, and we all feel that right now by driving around. And so these projects cost us tens of millions of dollars that we don't have. And I sit on a transportation committee to prioritize getting those dollars. The next thing that is important to us is managing growth through area-wide planning. And we're doing this in a couple of selected areas in the city where we're seeing people wanting to move to. You can't stop the growth. You just can't do it. There's no legal way, but you can manage it. And then finally, there are things that are going to be happening in downtown Port Orchard. This next four years is going to see some start of some incredible projects and some wonderful changes that are going to help stimulate and revitalize the downtown of Port Orchard.
Thank you, Mr. Deener. Mr. Chang.
Hi, I had to unmute myself. I agree with much of what I've been hearing, that we need an infrastructure that is maintained, and we need to do it on as much of our budget as we can. This is one of the reasons that the city has made sure that development pays for its share of growth. I believe that transportation is an important element, and also I'm very pleased to see that we have a pretty decent public transit system in place. And there is also an issue that I believe that needs to be addressed, which is the increasing homelessness that we see in the city and the surrounding areas. My suggestion would be, of course, more education for the council as well as the public on some of the causes for what is happening. We have heard about people living in RVs, and it may be due to the recent evictions of people no longer having their own housing.
Thank you, Mr. Chang. Mr. Trenary.
All right, did I get it right that time? Am I unmuted?
Yes.
All right. All right. So there's a couple of things that are most important from my viewpoint. One of them is, you know, I agree with Mr. Deener, we're growing at a tremendous rate. So our infrastructure is behind a little bit, and we are trying to catch up with that. But that also includes a couple of things that are very concerning. Number one is the police and staffing. You know, as we continue to grow, we're going to need to grow this police force to be able to provide the citizens the required protection that they deserve. One of the other things is trying to eliminate some of the red tape that a small business and our citizens need to go through to simply do an easy task on their piece of property or at their business, such as replacing a sign for the same like-size sign. It's a tremendous amount of time and waste and money when you have to go through those processes. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Trenary. Mr. Williams.
As I said in my opening statement, my priority would be the infrastructure. We are growing. We don't have any control over that. We do have the most affordable housing, for that matter, what you define as affordable housing in this day and age. But our infrastructure is crumbling, and right now, the city is wasting money on vanity projects instead of taking that money and putting it into the infrastructure. For the amount of money we spent on the community center, we could have improved Sedwick, Bethel, Bay Street, any order, a number of them. Roundabouts are being put in, and we're now having a traffic study because people keep getting in accidents. No one knows how to use a roundabout. I've seen it personally. No one knows how to merge because we're not taught. So we're building things that aren't necessarily needed as a vanity project instead of things that we need. That would be my focus.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. And Mr. Rosa Pepe.
Thank you. I think infrastructure has been talked about enough with sewer and water upgrades. One thing that we haven't mentioned here is affordable housing. The council has been very diligent in changing codes to allow accessory dwelling units, ADUs, and also congregate living. We're also giving tax breaks to developers who bring in more affordable housing. So that's greatly appreciated by the council and working with developers. I think that Fred spoke very eloquently about homelessness, and one of the things that the city has done is hired a navigator, which works with folks to make sure they get the help they needed and get pointed in the right direction instead of just the police going out in all cases. Last but not least, I would like to talk about two seconds for funding. Funds aren't just in the general fund. Some, like the community center, are designated funds from outside sources and can't be spent elsewhere. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rosa Pepe. And that's all the responses for question number one. Question number two. The city of Port Orchard has accepted a grant from the Federal American Rescue Plan for almost $3 million. Which of the following categories for allowed spending would you emphasize? Support public health expenditures? Address the negative economic impacts caused by the public health emergency? Replace lost public sector revenue? Provide premium pay for essential workers? Invest in water, sewer, and broadband infrastructure? I can read those. Repeat the question? Yeah, I'll read those one more time. There are quite a few of them there. The city of Port Orchard has accepted a grant from the Federal American Rescue Plan for almost $3 million. Which of the following categories for allowed spending would you emphasize? Support public health expenditures? Address the negative economic impacts caused by the public health emergency? Replace lost public sector revenue? Provide premium pay for essential workers? Invest in water, sewer, and broadband infrastructure? And we will begin this question with Ms. Fenton.
Okay, thank you. I would do the revenue for what is lost because I feel like with the small businesses and the business around that because of COVID and now they want to do mandates with these small businesses, I would invest with that, with some of that, and see where we're hurting in that and put back in with those revenues. But also, we need to work on the water and the sewer and the broadband on that because since we're growing way out in McCormick and with the traffic that way and then sewer and water, and even here, being here in the city, it has doubled within the last six years. And so it needs to be more fair when it comes to the water and the sewer and those bills for the community at large. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fenton. Next will be Mr. Deener.
Thank you. I guess I have a couple priorities, and then I'll answer with my lowest priority. I believe that we'd want to help with the negative impacts of the pandemic because so many people have felt that in so many different ways, and so many people were on the cusp of being homeless before the pandemic. And so we're seeing a lot of effects from the pandemic that I think this funding could help. I also believe that where we could, if there were monies left over, it would be good to invest that into our infrastructure because that helps our ratepayers out in the end so that they're not having to pay for capital facilities costs and maintenance in the long run. So those are two of my most important priorities out of the list. My lowest priority would be replacing public sector revenue because the city has done really well with its sales tax over the last couple of years. Last year, we had a $500,000 increase in sales tax over the prior year, pre-pandemic, and this year, year-to-date, we're 24% above last year at this time. So those are my priorities and my lowest priority. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Deener. Next will be Mr. Chang.
I also agree with Mr. Deener that we would need to try to improve some of the negative impacts caused by the epidemic. And for me, that means helping people with rents, both individuals and businesses, and the city actually did do that, but also helping individuals who are behind on their utility bills. I'm really intrigued by the notion of premium pay for essential workers because the essential workers certainly did have to give up some of the pay that they might have gotten had they gone on the unemployment. And many of them braved their own health. So I really feel for them, but the question is, would the city pay a supermarket for their workers and give them premium pay? Or would this be for the city's own essential workers? And if the latter, my second priority would be premium pay for the city's essential workers.
Thank you, Mr. Chang. Mr. Trenary.
All right. So from my viewpoint, I think the number one priority would be to invest this money in the water, sewer, and broadband improvements to help offset the increased costs and to have the city, quite frankly, catch up with the lack of infrastructure that we have right now based on the amount of growth we're having. based on the amount of growth we're having. I'm a member of the Kurt Wagner Educational Fund and when the pandemic first started, we tried to buy broadband units for school kids who were no longer able to go to class. And we were unable to do that because there was no broadband available for out in the the communities like Awalha, Bethel, these kind of areas. So we weren't able to help, which was really tragic. My second wish would be that we would spend that money on the, to help the negative impact that the pandemic had on businesses and citizens.
Thank you, Mr. Teneri. Mr. Williams.
Believe it or not, I actually agree with my opponent. We should primarily put the money into infrastructure improvements, especially the broadband. I am a big proponent of internet. A lot of our economy is going to remote work, things that you can do remotely so you don't have to interact with people. Then secondly, I would, I would want to assist in the negative impacts caused by the economic shutdown. Had we not shut down, there would have been no economic, uh, uh, negative impacts. So, and there may not have been a reason in some cases to shut down. I mean, online stores, online availability stores, things like that. But they were still mandated closed, even though they could have sold things via Facebook Marketplace. So there are ways we can mitigate that, that economic things caused by, by the government's own actions. But primarily infrastructure, especially broadband, would be a great use of that money.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Mr. Rosa Pepe.
Thank you. I would remind everybody that money doesn't come without strings. So we need to make sure that we're following all the legal guidance that it has. And the reason I bring that up is sometimes, as was talked about with premium pay, whether that's, if it's coming to all workers, that can be a, sometimes viewed as a gift to public funds. That being said, I do agree with what everybody's been saying here, that infrastructure, which benefits all, should be a primary use of the funds and also the negative impacts that have been caused by COVID. Even though we've had a banner year with sales tax, that hasn't been seen by everybody in, in some of the small businesses. I would like to acknowledge that the city has delayed collection of people who are behind on their water and sewer bills due to COVID and the inability to pay. And that's another action we took as a council. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Jones.
Yeah, this is an easy one for me. The money was meant for businesses and think people affected by, by COVID shutdowns. Businesses were shut down involuntarily. So they were the ones hurt by the government. Granted by the pandemic, but they had no say in that issue. So that money is to go there. I believe it doesn't belong anywhere else. Now on infrastructure as far as well, utility bills, people were affected by that. So I believe some of the money should go to, to the citizens, the 15,000 citizens of Port Orchard that couldn't pay their utility bills. I don't think the money is meant for anything else and should be earmarked for that purpose for the people that were affected, not by, for the people that were not affected. Money for those projects should come from elsewhere.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Question number three. Port Orchard has become a focus for new construction. More than 4,000 new homes and apartments are being built or planned within the Port Orchard city limits. As a result, a 50% increase in population is projected. What strategies do you support to ensure that our infrastructure is able to handle this influx of people? And how will this new infrastructure be funded? First up will be Mr. Deener.
Okay, yes. As I mentioned earlier, Port Orchard is seeing tremendous growth and a lot of it, a lot of that is due to the affordability and, and I put air quotes around that of our area. Recently, the city council updated its impact fees for development. And so those fees go towards schools, roads, fire, and there's one more that I'm missing. We also updated our capital facility charges for development and those charges hadn't been looked at in very, very long time. Those charges are meant to make sure that development pays its fair share of its impact on our infrastructure and in a prorated fashion of the life of that infrastructure so that current ratepayers aren't having to pick up the expenses for new development. So new development today is seeing requirements that old development didn't have to follow. But this is a different day, it's a different dawn, it's a different administration, and we're making sure that development pays its way as it's required to do under the State Growth Management Act.
Thank you, Mr. Deener. Next is Mr. Chang.
I have to echo what Mr. Deener said. I would also say that these impact fees that the city has raised are not popular. Certainly not popular with builders and I would imagine the Builders Association is not happy about them. But I would hope that they would realize why they were necessary. They, they haven't been raised, for example, the water and sewer connection fees were nearly doubled or tripled from what they were, which is quite a big jump if you're a developer, but if you're looking at the state of the, the current facilities and what's needed to be improved and built, it would make sense that growth would pay a, a large share, certainly of the facilities that they need. The schools, the roads, and the parks have their own impact fees. Certainly the county has their own impact fees. And this is unfortunately not going to mean that the infrastructure is built before they're developed, but will be built concurrently or as they're being developed. It's probably the best we can do.
Thank you, Mr. Chang. Next will be Mr. Teneri.
Well, I have to agree with Mr. Deener, Mr. Chang on the processes and the importance and priorities of this. I'd also like to add that the city needs to increase their staffing both at the policing level as well as the community development levels to help push these development processes and permits through so that they can be done in a quicker manner and, and the city staff can move on to other permits and other sections of those permitting processes. I'm very, very concerned about our policing staff with this continued growth that we're seeing and the shortage of that policing staff.
Thank you, Mr. Teneri. Next will be Mr. Williams.
The as most have said, the developments need to pay for the infrastructure that they load, that they are adding. So developmental fees make sense. The issue is, wouldn't be the areas that development is happening, it's the areas outside of those, the, the main thoroughfares, Bethel, Sedwick, Bay, et cetera, Mile Hill. Those roads are degraded and those are the main thoroughfares to the city. So we would need to use some of the developmental fees and funds to improve those roads. We, there's no other way. Otherwise, we have the Pottell X and Bay Street or every time, when the shipyard gets out. Same with Bethel and Mile Hill Drive and the roundabouts where people don't know how to merge don't help because people come to a stop at a yield sign.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Mr. Rosa Pepe.
Thank you. You know, one of the things I would like to point out is that the 50% population increase is not happening tomorrow. We do have a lot of building, but I don't want to scare anybody off at the same time. One of the things that the city has done a very good job at is working with developers so that these projects are happening concurrently. Prior used to collect, collect connection fees of, as the houses were built. We're actually working with developers who are working with the city and paying upfront and getting credits on their connection fees so that we can improve our infrastructure in advance, such as pump stations, water reservoirs, et cetera. Regarding road improvements, both Mile Hill and Sedwick are state highways and we're trying desperately to work with the state to get those improvements made. We cannot do those, the city cannot be responsible for those and can't afford to. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rosa Pepe. Mr. Jones.
Yeah, thanks for this question. It seems to me that what's, what's happened in the past with the shortage of water in McCormick Woods, it seems to me we need new city employees that know how, how to handle these problems. The planning department has developed these grandiose schemes. You look in the city hall, in the city council meeting on the wall there, there's something that looks like the Jetsons on the wall there without the Port Orchard Marina in it. They've been focused on these issues and McCormick Woods has been, not had the water. We need to, we need to get some people in the planning department that have a clue what the real world is and not these outrageous plans for the future. Let's work on the present. And the growth will not be, there's no guarantee there'll be that 50%. The growth will come, but we don't need to go into a panic mode for the future. We need to worry about the present.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. And Ms. Fenton.
Yes. I, I mean, we're in a recession right now and I know the builders got hit with a huge fee. And so that fee should also go with, with McCormick's out there. It's not even McCormick Woods anymore because all the woods are going, going away with all the new building. Some of those fees need to be allocated for a school. What, I already know people out there that live in McCormick and they're worried about all those kids and where are they going to go? We're going to have schools that are just going to be overflowing. We need to be really paying attention to the traffic out there and, you know, for schools and I agree with, you know, police. We don't even have enough police right now just for us. And so we've got to really be working on these fees and seeing where it really needs to be allocated to and where the best money will suit and not just hire people for our taxpayers to pay again for more people. Get the right people in there to do the right job. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fenton. Okay, question number four. What are ways the city of Port Orchard could encourage and support local businesses and other economic development? We'll begin with Mr. Chang.
I think that communication would help a lot, both communication with, with the businesses and communication between the city and businesses to find out what it is that they need. There are, we, we are fortunate that we have both a Port Orchard Bay Street Association and a South Kitsap Chamber of Commerce that connects our, our merchants. I feel that they probably need additional help in and these are probably things that both of those organizations are trying to fill where they get help with other ways of drawing in customers. Now that we know that so much of it has gone online and so many of them were not able to be open fully. They probably need some coaching in how to set up an e-card so they could segue to e-commerce if that's what they wanted to do.
Thank you, Mr. Chang. Next will be Mr. Teneri.
Forgot to do that again. Sorry, could you repeat the question for me, please?
Yes, I, I can. What are ways the city of Port Orchard could encourage and support local businesses and other economic development?
Well, I think there were a lot, many ways that the, the city could have done a better job of supporting the local businesses during the pandemic. But, but that's all, that's past information. Moving forward, I think communication is with the current businesses is one of the most important features that the city could improve upon. Letting the businesses know what's happening around them, when it's happening and how long they expect it to be happening. There's been a little, some issues in regards to that as far as I'm concerned. Quite frankly, I, I think we've, we're on a good path as far as encouraging new businesses and new development to come into the downtown area. So I'm not so sure we want to jump into a, a, any more of that type of promotion when we can't keep up with what's going on currently.
Thank you. Next will be Mr. Williams.
Well, one of the biggest things we can do to encourage investments and small business and economic improvement is a local ban on income tax. So no capital gains tax, no income tax, some tax breaks maybe for small businesses. Not for the big multinational corporations, of course, but like the mom and pop shops. And not enforcing lockdown orders that come down from on high that unnecessarily infringe upon the business to operate as they see with, within reason, of course, but telling people to shut down when they operate online or have a remote, a, a, a curbside pickup or some other method of limited social access and social distancing is just wrong. There's no need for it.
Thank you. Mr. Rosa Pepe.
Right now, one of the ways we can do is continue to work with downtown businesses on zoning changes as are requested. We're able to evaluate those and make those changes. We also got approved for two opportunity zones within the city. This is going to help businesses as they apply for those to take advantage of, I believe, tax breaks for that. I would like to remind people that Port Orchard does not collect the BNO tax, which Bremerton and Gig Harbor both do. That's one way we're helping small businesses already. On the Economic Development Committee, there is one with the city. We probably can do a better job of communicating with our small businesses. But the Chamber of Commerce and POPS, a Port Orchard Bay Street Association are members of the committee. So they're there. So it's going to be one of all of us, both the business leaders and the city to do a better job of communicating about how we can improve our economic development. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Jones.
I will try and refrain from saying what I'd like to say. But the communication between the city hall and the local businesses lacks so much. The destruction of my vacation rental, the destruction of my neighbors' homes and the threat looming over existing businesses. The most the, the best, the largest restaurant most, it's, it's unfathomable. And this subject, yeah, the current city hall should not even weigh in. You should be discreet, you should be ashamed of yourselves.
All right, Ms. Fenton.
Yes, I definitely, that's what I run it on, communication. I think that is so important. Especially with the city hall and, and down with the small businesses and make it business friendly. And, you know, it, it, it takes a while. You got to build that trust. You got to go down there. You got to meet the, the owners, spend time down there. And these, I mean, that's the heart of downtown with our restaurants and small businesses. So that's a key for communication and seeing what they want. We have such cool groups right now, like Fathom of Fun. We got a, a South. We got a South Rotary, we got Port Orchard Rotary, which I'm a part of. And then the Bay Street Beestow, Bay Street Business Association, especially the Chamber of Commerce. Those guys are all great, but there also has to be great communication with city council and them and the mayor and them. So we all have to be working together, but we can, we can provide a lot of stuff for them so they can really thrive and feel important and and feel that they are supported in our community.
Thank you, Ms. Fenton. And Mr. Deener?
Thank you. I think it's important to have a discussion with the small businesses and the business community about what the city's role is, which is to provide a policy framework that is friendly to business development. And to implement this, we need to do that with good code, plans and permitting, and then get out of the way and let the free market run itself. So communication is good. I'd like to hear from the business community about specifically what is not working for them. We should look at incentivizing mixed-use development, which provides both housing, home offices, jobs and services while keeping cars off the roads in that particular neighborhood. And we're doing that in some of our subarea planning. We should look at developing code for home businesses and cottage industries in a post-pandemic world. These are new realities which our code hasn't yet adapted to. Then we also need to understand the barriers to permitting and using focus groups to help devise or understand where those pinch points are and ask the community what those barriers are and how we can remove those barriers. And then we need to make sure that our business toolkit is up to date and that we have access to data to help us manage those issues better.
Thank you. This next question is a little long, so I'll read it twice also, so you'll know I'll read it twice. And looking at our time, this may be our last question before closing arguments. Question number five. What should be the city's priorities regarding environmental issues? Would you support additional electric car charging stations? With the significant rainfall in January, sewer pumps in Port Orchard failed, pushing 245,000 gallons of sewage into Sinclair Inlet. What can the city do to make sure it's on track for a redesigned and reconstructed sewer system? So I'll read that one more time. What should be the city's priorities regarding environmental issues? Would you support additional electric car charging stations? With the significant rainfall in January, sewer pumps in Port Orchard failed, pushing 245,000 gallons of sewage into Sinclair Inlet. What can the city do to make sure it's on track for a redesigned and reconstructed sewer system? We'll start with Mr. Trinari.
Sure, I get I get the long question, huh? I see. So, you know, first and foremost, of course, I would support more electric charging stations downtown. I I believe that that's the way that the world is moving towards electric vehicles. I do also believe that we are, have done some remodel and rebuilding of our sewer substations and the pump stations within the city already to help stop that issue that we did have with the recent rains last year. So I think we're on track for that, but we need to continually be looking for ways of improving our standards. I know we have a sea level rise study that came out and we're looking at developmental changes to make sure that that is taken into consideration for the the next, for the shoreline protection and the sea level rise moving into the future.
Thank you. Mr. Williams?
I spent 20 years in the nuclear navy, so I'm a proponent of green energy. But there's very little a city can actually do about environmental issues on a local level other than change their codes to encourage sustainable and environmentally friendly buildings, increasing the R-value of insulation requirements so that there is less energy required for heating and cooling, encouraging the use of solar panels, et cetera, from a roof. Even though given our climate, we're only gonna get about 80% use out of that, battery banks, et cetera, et cetera. As for electric vehicle charging, well, they they have a larger carbon footprint than people think because it all depends on where you get the power. So that, and the sewer, in the, in the, in the navy, we used redundancy. If something failed, we had a backup and that's what we should do. We should improve our respect for it. That we have redundant backups for important parts of our infrastructure. People that live on boats can accidentally put a bit of sewage into the water, black water into the sound and we get
Thank you. And next will be Mr. Rosa Pepe.
Thank you. Yes, I'm in favor of additional electrical charging stations. We have a lot of folks that are getting electrical cars. It's a prudent thing to do. We are on the way of improving our sewer and water in conjunction with West Sound Utility District who we work with in our sewer projects. We're working on pump and lift stations, both design and implementation of building it out. It's part of why we need consultants to help us through this because we would not be able to hire the people necessary to do this design work right now. Also, for climate environmental, we do have a shoreline master plan that's being evaluated by Department of Ecology as we speak. And that's very critical to the city of Port Orchard since a lot of our downtown development depends on keeping the sea rise, obviously, at bay, no pun intended. Thank you.
Thank you. Next will be Mr. Jones.
Well, I lived firsthand on the bay for 40 years. I've seen the tides within inches of of previous years. And you're not gonna have to worry about the next, next couple of years. Having said that, the next thing, but what I am concerned about is if you, if the existing if the existing city infrastructure that is, that was built by previous administrations can handle the existing, what's going to happen and in one year when 6,000 more toilets flush at the exact time, same time? If you didn't get it right before, we need to bring in new people that that can get it right. You couldn't get McCormick Woods right, what makes you think you're gonna get the next 5,000 people, people coming in right? And let's bring in new people into city hall, not just councilmen, but the experts that can address these problems.
Thank you. Ms. Fenton?
Yes, I would definitely go with the sewer and the water. Just make sure you go around, especially before the the winter comes along. This is a perfect time. You gotta be doing the updates. You gotta, you know, make sure you get all the checks and balances right. We don't want that again, anything going in the water. And so I think it's really important just to make sure we have it all, you know, from, you know, A to Z, that it's all running right. And yeah, like, you know, Sean said, if something goes wrong, that's the backup. And I know they've been working on the sewer and stuff, right down on Sydney and they're, I was asking them about it and they were doing like a tube that's supposed to help, you know, to keep it stronger. And I mean, there's a lot of stuff that goes in it, but just make sure that it's running correctly and you're just always, you know, checking it and you don't let up on that.
Thank you, Ms. Fenton. Okay, Mr. Deener? You're muted.
Love it when that happens. So yes, to the, yes, to the charge stations. I think that's an easy answer with the increasing popularity of EVs. I also appreciate what Jay had to say about several projects underway. The city's role should be one of as a leader in using environmental codes. And with our recent shoreline master program, we adopted climate resiliency policies, goals and policies into that document. And we'll be using those goals and policies when we develop the South Kitsap Community Event Center, which will include building up our shoreline for sea level rise and will prevent downtown flooding in the future. So that's an example of where the city will be leading by example. The Marina Pump Station, that's next to where the Community Event Center is slated to be, is past its usable life. It is limping along, but it's a critical piece of equipment. It's slated for replacement with the event center. And so that's a critical piece of infrastructure that that we're gonna take care of. We also have other critical areas ordinances that we use, including our flood hazard area ordinances, our SEPA, our State Environmental Policy Act ordinances, and our, I think those are the main ones, yeah. So the city is is a leader.
Thank you. And Mr. Chang?
Well, it's easy for me to say all of the above. Obviously, all the priorities are, all of the elements are important. A couple that I'd like to draw out are such as the city will, is considering implementing solar panels for a parking area of the current city hall and also for the projected community event center. One thing that hasn't been mentioned is having a robust stormwater system. This would be paralleling the water and sewer system. And the tricky thing about a stormwater system is that how do you plan for something that doesn't happen every day? How do you allocate your resources to something that may happen once every 50 years, every hundred years? So that's some of the dilemmas or some of the ways that the council has to figure out how, where do you want to put your money first? Where do you get the most bang for your buck? But all of these, all of these elements are important, of course.
Thank you, Mr. Chang. Well, it's now 7:37 and to make sure that everyone gets time for their closing statement, I think we'll stop with the questions now. So your closing statements will go for 90 seconds, one minute and 30 seconds. And the person beginning the closing statements will be Mr. Williams.
Thank you for the legal women voters for giving us us this chance to state our views and answer your questions. I appreciated the hearing everybody's opinions and they were very good questions. My priorities on the city council, as I said, would be infrastructure improvements, environmental sustainability with through codes, building codes, making sure our infrastructure is rated to handle the growth that we're we're expected to see. Fiscal responsibility, we don't need to go into debt to build anything. We should have everything budgeted. I mean, how can we expect our people to live within their means when government doesn't? So accountability, responsibility and transparency, unreachable, Facebook, Instagram. Tell my phone numbers on the things. Give me a text, give me a Facebook message. I'll answer any questions. I respond to every email. My, I'm so committed to this, my face is going on my signs. So I'm literally putting my face out there for this, for this, for this run. I love the community. It's time to serve it, constituents. For a, a politician's first duty is through the constitution and then their constituents. Never to a lobbyist or developer or someone who supports them, but their actual constituents, the people.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Next will be Mr. Rosa Pepe.
Again, my thanks to the legal women voters, Kitsap for hosting tonight's forum. I think there's a clear distinction between candidates for no growth, no development, no consensus building, and those candidates who want to move forward with strategic development, planned growth, infrastructure construction and working with all the citizens in Port Orchard to move us forward in an area, in an era of growth, climate, social change. The work of a city council member, one of seven, is to build consensus and provide oversight for the benefit of all now and in the future. As previously mentioned, I asked the voters to focus on the facts and avoid going down the rabbit hole of social media and unsubstantiated comments. Each candidate has an email address to ask for specifics. Please use it. I believe in the direction the city of Port Orchard is moving and I believe in the citizens of the city of Port Orchard. Thank you and stay safe.
Thank you, Mr. Rosa Pepe. Mr. Jones?
Thank you for this opportunity. I appreciate it very much. Yeah, I sat back for the last 10 years and as a, as a businessman, having to live within my means and not relying on someone else to bail me out when I made a mistake. If I tried a project that I couldn't fund, I paid the price. 15,000 citizens in this city and they they deserve to be treated like the employer. If there's an us versus them mentality, I've seen it in other port districts and I've watched the port of Bremerton come around to where the customer is, is the, is king. And in this city hall, they keep things to themselves. It's hard to get information from them. And they seem to know what's best and and the people don't have a say. I resent that very much. The targeting businesses to just for destruction, for their own vanity projects. No, this is, this is not, this is not a city hall that's looking for our best interests. They have their own, own interests. And it's sad. It wasn't this way. I've been here for 42 years and it didn't used to be this way. And this is why I'm running. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Ms. Fenton?
Yes, yes, thank you for this opportunity. It's been really nice. Yes, I think Port Orchard is a wonderful town and it has so much potential. I am for growth. I just want growth to be responsible and that we can afford it and the infrastructure can hold it all. I have a passion for this and I feel like my leadership skills with communication, connecting to the people will go, will be very well received by the people too. I'm all for the transparency and accountability and, you know, I want people, the community to to get involved more with city council and give their ideas and so we can all compromise and work together. I think that's super important. And yeah, I just love when I go downtown and I walk the walkway. And I know that is a huge, you know, huge controversy, that walkway, but I believe that walkway, we can have it. But I think it could go down on the water, cross over, go down where we're not hurting houses and businesses. And then you go back over again and it would be even less expensive. So there's a lot of things we can do together and work together and communicate. But I think with just the way I, like I say, just work with the small businesses, I'm down there a lot. The people know me down there. And anyway, I just feel like this town is awesome and it does have just tremendous growth. And we are a small town, so let's keep that uniqueness of our small town. You know, we do not need to turn into Seattle and other, other cities. Let's be Port Orchard and let our history come out more too as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fenton. Mr. Deener?
Thank you. I'd like to say in closing that I'm focused on many issues, not just a few. Port Orchard is seeing record growth and challenges from all sides. My background, training and understanding of planning principles is what I will continue to bring to the city. I've been doorbelling since August. After talking to a lot of people, I feel like I continue to be in touch with the issues facing Port Orchard just managing growth, getting traffic improvements funded and taking care of our infrastructure and supporting good development in downtown and leading by example with our community event center. And very recent attention is also being given to homelessness and affordable housing. I support recommendations and decisions that are based on data and metrics. I vote on issues with an understanding of the city's guiding principles and input from the public, the decision's risk and how our adopted comprehensive plan supports the issue and fiscal responsibility. I believe that we can constantly improve. I've been accessible my entire time as a council member and I pride myself on responses, usually by email to preserve a record of what's been said. I'm proud of the work that's been accomplished in my last term. I'm proud that I've run a campaign based on facts and positivity. And to find out more about what's been done and where I stand on the issues and to contact me, go to my website, reelectscottdeener.com. Thanks to all who've supported me, including my wife and kids and for the range of endorsements from local leaders and businesses. Thanks to all who've supported me, including my wife and kids, and for the range of endorsements from local leaders and business owners to public servants and the South Kitsap Fire and Rescue Firefighters Union. And finally, thanks to the League of Women Voters for this opportunity.
Thank you, Mr. Deener. Mr. Chang.
I hate following Scott, but great speech, Scott. You're very well organized, and I have loved living in Port Orchard since 1996. And when I moved here, I have to tell you, city hall did not have a website, believe it or not. It's something that the city did certainly come up with, and it still could be improved. I have seen the city add an email list, and I've seen the city even step gingerly into Facebook and other social media. I'm always intrigued by ways of reaching the public, though. It's like you can go to them door to door, and that's often the best way to talk to them. You it's no longer the print media. Facebook is hit or miss. It depends on their individual feed. And unfortunately, direct mail is very expensive, and how many people read letters that they get from the city. So for me, it's an ongoing challenge to figure out how how do we reach more people? How do we interest them in what's going on at city hall? Often, the things that really get people riled up are when there are developments, such as a gas station next to their house. I mean, I would certainly be riled up about that. So I feel fortunate to live in Port Orchard, and I love the small-town feel, even though it's a growing city, and I hope we are able to keep it that way. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chang. And Mr. Trinari.
Well, I'd like to start by thanking the League of Women's Voters for the opportunity. It's been a learning experience for me. I'm not a politician at all. I'm a businessperson. I've been a problem solver for over 40 years. One of the things you do as a problem solver is you have to understand the problem to begin with. You have to have an open mind. You have to ask a lot of questions and listen intently to the responses you get. And then you set out on a mission to work together to find a solution that works for all of us. I call those win-wins, and I use that in my business, and I have for 26 years. What's good for me has to be good for you, or it's not good for any of us. If I'm elected, I promise to work hard and obtain a win-win solutions for the small businesses, the taxpaying citizens, and the entire community of Port Orchard. Thank you.
And thank you. Voters, hopefully, oh, did I leave anyone out? Just making sure I got to all of you. All right, thank you. Voters, hopefully, this forum helped you choose your candidates. Ballots for the November 2nd general election will be mailed out by tomorrow, October 15, so keep an eye out for them. The League is encouraging voters to vote early and return their ballots as soon as possible, preferably to one of Kitsap County's 25 drop boxes. Their locations can be found on the Kitsap Auditor's website. The 10 Kitsap candidate forums conducted over the first two weeks of October have been recorded, and links to the videos will soon be on our website at l w v dash kitsap dot org. Once again, l w v dash kitsap dot org. BKAT will also be broadcasting recordings at a time to be determined. Special thanks to Kitsap Regional Library for their support. Please encourage others to view the forums and vote. Thank you for attending, and good night.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good night.
Good night.
Thank you.